I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's school board meeting for Evergreen Public Schools. I look forward to an orderly meeting as the Board conducts its business and as we all work towards serving the needs of all the students in our district. And for those of you that would like to join us, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to entertain a motion to excuse Director Perkins, who is out of town on a business trip required by his work.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the -- yeah, that was pretty good. Next on the agenda is adopting our agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of tonight's agenda? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so our agenda has been adopted. Next, we have our Board Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion for its approval.
I move to approve the Board's Consent Agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That has been passed. Then next, we have the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion for its approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the Superintendent's Consent Agenda has been approved. Next on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. John Stich.
Okay, we've had a couple of things that have happened in the last week. We hosted the Regional Safety Summit, had Scott Johnson from Cressa did a great keynote. That was for all the administrators in the area. We thought it was a very good event. Last week, we held a new administrator orientation, and I wanted to commend Janee Gomes and Tracy Thompson for doing an amazing job of putting that together. We have never had that before, so our new administrators are much better prepared for the start of school than they ever have been in the past. We're also getting very close to our prototypical elementary design. In the Board Workshop last Friday, we had LSW Architects present sort of the conceptual design that we've put together so far, and it's really starting to come together. I think it's a building that we're all going to be proud of when we finally break ground and then construct and open those buildings in 2020. This morning, I kicked off the One by One Conference. We have over 1,100 people registered, and just for the people who weren't able to be there, I wanted to show kind of the way we kicked the conference off.
Are you singing?
I think he's gonna finish the recording.
And hopefully, if the microphone over here works, I have to say, this was the most nerve-wracking part of my day, by far.
Yeah, are there -- I think because of the crowd in the room, are there any empty seats? So anyone wants to partake in these empty -- few empty seats? I'm recording.
At this point, I'll just move forward.
It was quite spectacular.
Yeah, it is. So I rewrote a song from Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, "Any Dream Will Do," and wrote the words into "We Have a Dream From You." We had the Carmichael Middle -- or Cascade Middle School Choir join us onstage, had about 50 kids, and inserted right here a speech, part of the "I Have a Dream" speech from Martin Luther King, and then it culminated with 50 of our students in their native language on video saying, "I have a dream."
Broke the lyrics?
Yeah. So I was hoping to be able to show that to the people that couldn't make it this morning. I had a meeting this afternoon with the Builders Association, talking about the graduation requirement bill that I've been working on, and got a letter of endorsement from them. Meeting with CREDC tomorrow. I've got a meeting with their education policy committee, hoping to get formal endorsement from them as well. It should result, hopefully, if we can get this thing through, I'm working with Representative Stoner Harris to de-link graduation from the S-Back and offer career-connected learning competency of two credits per student to help alleviate the Core 24 graduation requirement. So that work is continuing to progress. I had conversations with policy people from OSPI, UEA, WASA, and I have a meeting set up for Scan for Children, trying to get them onboard too, and then Member State Board of Education as well. So making a lot of progress on that. We also want to give the Board, I've been giving you an update on negotiations in the last several meetings, just to get everybody up to speed, we did get the demand of bargain earlier this year from the district perspective, a little bit surprised because we did have the third year on the contract. So we've been presenting financials to the association leadership. Those financials have shown that we do not expect a significant ongoing increase. We have a one-year bump that comes pretty close to covering the cost of the current contract for one year, but not ongoing. So later on, Mike's going to be talking about that one-year bump and how long that surplus in this one year is going to be able to help sustain us into the future, and we'll be getting that in the budget report. I really wanted to kind of go back and share with the Board and those present, back in 2016, on August 28th, actually, it was the 29th, about 1:00 in the morning, when Mike Merlino and I were sitting in his office negotiating, we were on the verge of a strike vote two years ago. And we got on the phone with Superintendent Dieter at the time, and we're looking at proposals, trying to figure out how to proceed, and one of the things we were looking at was, could we afford the requests being made by the association at that time? Mike and I called John Dieter, talked to him about it, said that the proposals on the table was going to exceed our available revenue at the time, that we knew that there was a McCleary fix coming. Based upon that, we -- John literally just told Mike and I, he said, "I'm not going to be here in three years. This is going to be yours to figure out. So if you want to agree to this, you can agree to it, and the two of you are going to have to figure out the cuts in 2018, 19 if the legislature doesn't come through for us." So we had that discussion. We made a commitment at that time to make our teachers the highest-paid teachers in southwest Washington, and hoped that the legislature came through with the McCleary fix money. Actually, it was interesting, I got a call from Burke today, and the mediators that had sat in on that meeting, I asked her if she actually remembered that conversation, and she confirmed that that's exactly what Mike and I said. It said, "We're banking on the McCleary fix to be able to pay for the contract that we're offering with the 14.5% increase in tri over three years." And the one thing that we felt we got out of that contract was the third year of the contract, because we knew it was going to be very difficult to be able to sort out what was real and what was not in this year of transition and the McCleary. And so we were hoping to not have to have these discussions until a year from now. One of the things that I did want to show... So there has been some disagreement whether or not we really front-loaded the McCleary fix, and you know, I looked around, and one of the things that we produced with the help of the WA website was a listing of all of the districts that have settled so far across the state that have actually ratified. So this table shows you a listing of all the ratified districts, the number of students in each district, so the size of the district. Shows you off the WA website, the minimum salary for starting teachers, the top-end salary, and then we had some that were calculated for average total teacher salary, but several of them weren't, so I used staff mix factor with calculation. I'm talking to Warren Hopkins from ERN, who's been compiling some of this information, pulled that together, because we've been given information on the settlements during negotiations, so I thought it'd be inconceivable for me to not actually go out and talk to other superintendents and find out the reality behind it. Things like Lake Washington, that increased their school day by half an hour a day for this year, and also added four professional development days. So there's some context to some of these. The blanks on the number of days beyond 180, those are the districts I haven't been able to contact yet, I just haven't had the time to confirm exactly how many days in addition to 180 they have. The yellow bands across this show you the funding levels from the state based on regionalization. So we have 0%, 6%, 12%, 18%, and some 24% districts. As you can see, the top districts in the current settlements are Bainbridge Island, Lake Washington, and Bellevue, and they're all 18% regionalization districts. So they literally get 12% more money than we do. So the regionalization, you can also see there's a plus four on some of those. Those are the districts that had a high staff mix factor, so they have more experienced staff, and if you're above 4% above the state average, the state gave you a 4% starting a year from now. We're only 2.6% over, so we didn't get the money. So in essence, it was like about a 2.6% cut to us, because we don't get the money to actually pay for the staff that we currently have on a staff mix basis. That's that next column, Staff Mix, shows you whether districts gained or lost based on the staff mix changes. And then the final column shows you how much -- what's happening with the local levy. So it shows that Evergreen is going to lose over $1,000 per student in local levy money over, starting in -- it'll start next year and complete in the following year, because our levies are actually by calendar year instead of fiscal year. So some of these districts, the districts that are above us are all going to be receiving about $2,500 per student for levy. We receive $1,500. So the information that I sent out to the community earlier this year about Lake Washington, who our current contract is shown in green, that Lake Washington, they receive 18% regionalization, so that's 12% more money from the state from us, and they have a levy that's going to provide them $1,000 per student. So Lake Washington is gaining about $65 million out of the McCleary fix, whereas Evergreen gets about $6.5 million. So you can see on this same table, there's the EEA proposal that would actually put us higher-paid than Lake Washington, that has an additional $60 million in resources to be able to put toward salaries that we don't have. So all of the settlements that you see down here are ones that are in those 20 and 30%, and it's getting them up closer to the state average. Many of those are districts that didn't have tri packages before anything like the 27.55 plus the four days. One of the things I also wanted to share with you is, you know, when we entered into this, we looked at 3.1%, and we realized that this is pretty complex. I sent a series of logs out earlier this year trying to explain it. We put things on the website trying to explain it. We tried to explain it as bargaining table, but there's a lot of complexities to this. It's not a simple soundbite answer. So we were hoping that 3.1% would be a simple legal problem or legal answer that would avoid having to get into all the complexities of the fact that we just don't have the money. At this point, we have agreement that there is not a significant increase. Mike's going to show you some numbers later. But the one thing that I wanted to close with is, we've had some discussions, and you know, just like two years ago, we were under a lot of pressure at 1:30, 2:30 in the morning on the 29th, and the last thing we wanted was a strike. And that's the same position we're in now, other than two years ago, we had the hope of a McCleary fix in front of us. Now we know the reality of the McCleary fix, and unlike two years ago, where we thought we may be able to work it out, we're not in a position really to work it out, but we are going to go back to the table tomorrow. We have a revised proposal that we're going to lay on the table. We -- it is in compliance with the state law. As we interpret it, it shows movement. It shows movement, and we hope it shows a clear message that the district is not interested in a strike vote or strikes. And that's my superintendent report.
Okay, thanks, John. Next on our agenda is the first ruling of our budget for 2018-19, and for this, I'd like to call for Chief Operating Officer Mike Merlino. And as he comes to the podium, the Board has requested a presentation on the details of the budget for next year, but also in accordance to our operation expectation policy, we also request of Mike a four-year look at our budget. And because the district has received a proposal from the Evergreen Education Association, we have also asked Mike to provide us with scenarios of impact of that proposal, so we can best understand the situation. So whenever you're ready, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, this is a process that we go through every year. I believe this is either my 18th or 19th time I've done this in the district. We have more folks here tonight than we probably have had in the other 18 or 19 years, and that's great, more people that can take the information in. So basically, what we'll do tonight is kind of look at a first shot at what's in the budget. We mentioned the operational expectations. There are some new documents this year that we haven't provided in the past because of the change in governance, and in particular, the four-year outlook that you talked about was actually state law that requires, it's in the OEs, but the state as part of the final solution to the McCleary budget, the McCleary funding situation, that was something that they put in into that document. So there's going to be a lot of numbers. I'll kind of dig into some of the details around some of them, and I'm happy to answer any questions at any point in time. So the first slide looks just at total budget, what the total amount is in the budget that we are proposing for 1819. And you can see the beginning balance right on $26.6 million. We're really looking at it right around a $370 million budget for next year. And John mentioned earlier that there is a little bit of additional money this year, and we'll get into that in the revenue page, but that's why it shows a little bit of an increase in fund balance from '17, '18 to '18, '19. There are a number of assumptions that go into the budget, and we've always shared those assumptions with the Board as we build the budget. So the first document that you're looking at, the first slide you're looking at is enrollment. What are we thinking about student enrollment for next year? And unfortunately, I can't really see very well, so I'll turn around and see if I can see this better. You can see for 1819, we're budgeting about 25,468 students. That's actually down somewhere around 3% from our highest figure, the 26.4 back in 1415, and that really kind of reflects what we've seen in the last few years. It's been kind of flat to a little bit of a decrease this past year. We had a little bit of a bigger decrease, was kind of an outlier for us. We're hoping that we see more normalization of enrollment, enrollment being a huge factor for the budget, being off, you think about being off by 1% in enrollment, if you're off 1% at home or anywhere, it doesn't sound like a huge number, 1%, but 1% when you're talking about enrollment is about 260 kids at about eight, a little over $8,000 a student, you're talking about 1.6, 1.7 million. So it's quite a bit of money. It's actually almost the amount of money is what we would put in terms of staffing into an elementary school. So it's really important for us to be accurate with the budget, and I think we've been conservative. I think that this is the right way to go. We've always shared special ed enrollment as well in the past. The state has capped the amount of, you can have as many special ed enrollment students in the district as you identify, but you're only funded up to a certain percentage. So that's why on the far right side, you see the percentages, 12.7, the number, we're looking at that number being about 12.9%. That cap at the state level was 12.7% before the McCleary fix. They'd increased that to 13.5. So that is one way that we've seen a little bit of relief in terms of funding, that we can actually, we're actually funded for all of the students that we serve. That 12.9, the percentage is roughly the same. The number of special ed students has been roughly the same for, well, at least four or five years, but a big part of what happens in the budget, no question. We also talked about levy rates, and what we've always, and this isn't a new slide, we've shown this for years, but it basically talks about the MNO levy rate in previous years, that debt service levy rate is the actual rate when the community passes a bond, like we passed the bond in February. What they're really saying is, you can go out and sell bonds to insurance companies, whoever you're selling them to, for the $695 million that was approved, and then what the community is saying is, we will pay the principal and interest over time on those bonds. So when they come due, we'll, you can raise our taxes to make those payments. So what you see here is the MNO rate that has been approved by the voters previously, and then the debt service rate. And the piece, like John mentioned, the levy impacts of the McCleary fix, you can see in the 2019 column, that MNO levy rate going from 3.21 in 2018 down to $1.50. So we've talked a lot, there's been a lot of talk about the new money that's coming to the district, the new money that's coming, which there is new money coming to the district, there's no new state funds coming to the district, no question, and we'll talk a little bit about that additionally. But there's also no question that we are collecting less money from the local taxpayers than we have in past years. And that really was kind of the basis of the McCleary final resolution was, the Supreme Court ruled, the state was not fully funding education, they were relying too much on local levies to fill the gap. And so therefore, we're going to lower the amount of money you can collect locally, and you've heard the term levy swap. Some people have heard the term. It was a way for the state to reduce the local levy and then increase the state-collected school property tax, so that's kind of what they consider the swap. In 2018, that state property tax went up by like 90 cents or something thereabouts, but local tax rates did not decrease in 2018. They decreased fully in 2019, so this reflects that change. We agree, we have agreed in, you know, there's terms for levy swap, is a term that not a lot of people really care for, levy swap. There's all kinds of different things you can call it. I think that we've kind of settled when we meet on state funding scheme, so it really is just a new way to fund schools. So we haven't really called it the levy swap. When we're talking with EEA and bargaining, we refer to it as the state funding scheme. But the purpose of this really is to show, there is a tangible decrease in property taxes to the local taxpayers that will take effect in 2019. There were a lot of people that complained when they got their 2018 tax bills, because the state property tax rate went up and the local levy was at the same rate, so there were some pretty significant increases. At that time, we talked about the fact that, well, yeah, it's true, and actually, we talked about this before the bond was even passed, what the impact was going to be on the tax rate. It is going to, they are going to go down, and whether you live in Evergreen, whether you live in Vancouver, whether you live in Battleground, it's going to go down in all of those districts. The school districts in Clark County were not the beneficiaries of the McCleary theoretical fix. There's no question taxpayers are a beneficiary in Clark County. King County, they are receiving new funds and their taxpayers are paying an increased amount. I would also mention that when we passed the bond, we advertised the $1.77 rate. We did our first bond sale in, I think it was June, or June 4th. Very successful, had great rates, which mean lower taxes for taxpayers, but we're absolutely on the path of fulfilling what we had talked about with the voters when they authorized the bond and the rates at that level also. Budget assumptions. This is a new document. This is one of the documents that comes from the OEs. There are various assumptions when you build a budget. When you're talking about a budget that's over 80% of the budget is related to staff, people, and benefit costs associated with them, the amounts of money that you budgeted and that you agreed to with your groups are important. So this is a requirement of the OEs that we have with the school board to disclose, what did we use when we built the budget? So John mentioned the 3.1. When we went into, and when we've settled with two groups that were open for 1819, EAA, the Administrators Association, and then EEA represents the coaches, the extracurricular contract. So John mentioned the 3.1. There were some pretty specific rules within the budget, not the budget, but the bill that kind of set the policy around how education funding is affected in the future. And what we did was, for the first year, they said that you could increase salaries up to 3.1 for the 2018. They said up to what the CPI limit was, which was identified from OSPI as 3.1%. So when we negotiated with the principals group, that's the number that they agreed to, the 3.1%. When the non-rep, so these are generally administrators down here, that 3.1% was applied to them as well. When we negotiated with the coaches, we also came to an agreement of 3.1%. The other numbers you have in around EEA, PSC Large Group, and PSC Office Clerical, all three of those groups had contracts that extended into 2018-19. So for the 2018-19 school year, for the budget, what was built into the budget was what had been agreed to in the spring and late summer of 2016. So what was agreed to from EEA at that time was what the state COLA was, what the state pass-through was, and that's the 1.9% that we used. And then the tri percentages that John mentioned, which started, I think, around 14 or 15%, I can't remember what it was back then, but a 5% increase. So the responsibility part of the tri contract for 1819 goes from 22.55% to 27.55%. So that's why when we talked about the increase from '17, '18 to 1819, we've included the 1.9% and the 5% for tri, and it's a net of about 6%. Additionally, the state in their McCleary fix started putting new, adding new professional development days. So in the 1819 school year, they added one day. They'll add another day for 1920, and another day, I think, for 2021, ultimately for a total of three days. So what we had budgeted for was the 1.9%, the 5% in tri, and then one more professional development day for the teachers, which is how you get to the 6.5 or whatever the number is that we have been talking about. The other two groups, PSE Large Group and Office Clerical, both also had contracts in place for 1819, which included the pass-through from the state, which was the 1.9. PSE Large Group had an additional 3.2, that's how you get to the 5.1, and then Office Clerical PSE had an additional 3, and that's how you get to the 4.9. So what we built into the budget for next year is either a 3.1% increase for a staff member, 4.9, a 5.1, or a 6.5% increase, depending on the group. state pass-through was, and that's the 1.9% that we used. And then the try percentages that John mentioned, which started, I think, around 14 or 15%, I can't remember what it was back then, but 5% increase. So the responsibility part of the try contract for 18, 19 goes from 22.55% to 27.55%. So that's why when we talked about the increase from 17, 18 to 18, 19, we've included the 1.9 and the 5% for try, and it's a net of about 6%. Additionally, the state in their McLeary fix started putting new, adding new professional development days. So in the 18, 19 school year, they added one day, they'll add another day for 19, 20, and another day, I think, for 20, 21, ultimately for a total of three days. So what we had budgeted for was the 1.9%, the 5 in try, and then one more professional development day for the teachers, which is how you get to the 6.5, or whatever the number is that we have been talking about. The other two groups, PSE, Large Group and Office Clerical, both also had contracts in place for 18, 19, which included the pass-through from the state, which was the 1.9. PSE Large Group had an additional 3.2, that's how you get to the 5.1, and then Office Clerical, PSE had an additional 3, and that's how you get to the 4.9. So what we built into the budget for next year is either a 3.1% increase for a staff member, a 4.9, a 5.1, or a 6.5% increase, depending on the group. Then we get into some of the, that's not correct title, I changed the title, but that's fine, the expenditure amounts for the various programs. So on the far left, you have the program, that's the, when you get into the budget, this is, this is the fun stuff, this is the really exciting stuff, when you're talking about the budget, and I, I don't know if there's extra bottles of water in the back of the room to get you through this, but this talks about the various, this is actually what happens in schools. So basically, and you see all the different programs, part of the OEs also is, was that we are required to present the actual figures for 16, 17, the years, two, two years prior, the budget for 17 and the budget for 18, 19. So we, I've had the opportunity to meet with the board over the last couple months, and get into some pretty specific detail about these dollar amounts, but this is part of the OE requirements, and this first page is just looking at state and local programs, and this is all, will be on the website if it isn't already, so if you ever wanna go back in, a lot of people probably will wanna go back in and look at this, and digest it, and you're more than happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions at any point in time. But this generally shows the increases from year to year in the various programs. The one program for me that stands out as a large number is the High and Capable, it looks like that's a large increase year to year. It actually is, it doesn't really reflect, what it reflects is, we have a lot of teachers in the district that teach a number of different things, but we've had people in middle school that have not been identified as Excel teachers. So what this really reflects is that we've voted some of these people in the middle schools that are working with that population, and they're voted. It really doesn't reflect an increase of the program, it's just the way we charge them in the accounting system, and I only mention that just so, some explanation for why it's so different. Overall, the state and local programs, it's about an 8% increase. Additionally, you see some federal programs, and then at the bottom of the page, transfers between funds. Bottom line, we have about a 7.3% increase is what we're budgeting for next year, and that's reflective of the full bargaining agreements, the agreements that we have with the non-rep as well. We're pretty much to the point where the LIFT initiative is fully implemented, and we are pretty much to the point where the curriculum levels are where they were projected to be. So I don't see a lot of growth in the future in terms of future, I mean, I'm not saying there wouldn't necessarily be changes, but kind of the initiatives that we've undertaken over the last several years are budgeted for here, as well as all of the agreements. We've also, over the years, this is not part of the OEs, but this was really kind of going back to looking at where we were in '04, '05, which was kind of the, around the time before we had to start making some of the cuts. When I talk about being around 18, 19 years, I've, we've seen a lot of different things, but, but there are probably a lot of people, even in this room, and certainly employed in the district, that never went through the cuts that we went through in the 910 and in that range. So we were kind of trying to look and, look and say, at that time, we had, we had priorities of how we wanted to spend our money, and trying to keep that money in the progress. What we've done is we've periodically, we've just updated this every year, to show what percentage of our budget is being spent in those various areas, how did that, how does that compare with other districts our size, and then how does it compare on a statewide basis? And I think that, for the most part, I think that we've compared pretty favorably in these The next page, even though it says expenditure, I didn't change it up, this is actually revenue, so this is money that's coming into the district. So this goes into where is the money actually coming from, what did we budget for in 17, 18, and what are we budgeting for in 18, 19, in the various areas? And, again, on the far right, you can see percentage-wise what the increases and decreases are. The, the ones to highlight, really, the top two, again, talking about those property tax rates earlier when we talked about them, we talked about the fact that, that the amount of money that we were reflecting locally was going to decrease in the new state funding scheme. And so this represents, in 18, 19, the, what, what really occurred was, the legislature in the summer of 2017, at the last minute, June 30th, they passed the budget, of how they were going to implement the McLeary fix. They then came back again in the spring of 18, in the next legislative session, and they had kind of set some policy, and at that time, they were planning on increasing the state revenue 50% in the first year, and another 50% in 19, 20. They were also under the watch of the Supreme Court, they were still being fined $100,000 a day, and so the legislature had somewhat of a windfall in terms of new revenue that came into the state, and they wanted to give out from underneath the Supreme Court's jurisdiction. So they allocated, instead of the 50% the first year and 50% the second year, they accelerated to 50%. So in 18, 19, because they accelerated the revenue, and they hadn't reduced the local tax completely, 19, 20 is the first year where you see the, the full impact of the reduction of local levy and levy equalization, that's the one year, a little bit of an extra bump that you see. You see the negatives in 18, 19 for levy and equalization, they'll go down again when you get to 19, 20, and I'll show some slides that identify that. And you also see the increases in state apportionment, special ed, lab, there's no question, we're getting new state money, and we've acknowledged that at all points, we just try to highlight that we're also losing money on the other side. This page, it's about an 8.68% increase between state and local revenue, and then when you get into federal revenue, another 2% for a total increase of about 8%. So we have a little over 8% increase in revenue in the district versus the 7 point, whatever it was, I can't remember, in expenditures, and that's what allows us to balance the budget. This next slide tries to give kind of a, over a three-year period, 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20. So OSPI, when the budgets are passed, OSPI goes through a lot of work creating these, what they call pivot tables, or the spreadsheets, where you can go ahead and pull up your district, and then you can pull up the amount of money that's coming into your district. This is looking at total state revenue, total state levy equalization, and then local MNO and enrichment levy, over a three-year period. And you can see that we're at $291 million in 17, 18, and by the time we get to 20, 21, we're at $323 million. Over that three-year period, it's about 11% increase. If you take that 11.15% increase over three years, it's like a 3.7% increase annually. If you look at that number for, let's say, Lake Washington, or, that number's gonna be a lot larger. Even in our county, I think everybody fared better than us, the only one that I've seen, and I haven't, I haven't, we've got a spreadsheet that we've run numbers through, we've shared with EEA, and, and I think they're on the same page with us on that. The only district that I've come across in Clark County that fared worse than us is Battleground, in terms of how much new money per student is collected, so it's, it's, we just weren't treated very well in the ultimate solution. It's hard to kind of, this, just kind of give a visual of the, the state, or the local shrinking, overall, although the dollar amount doesn't really change as much as we had hoped it would. The next slide is a bar chart that looks just at state apportionment money. So what state apportionment money is, you've got your, what kind of goes on in a school, on a day-to-day basic, basic education, that money that follows that student that comes in, and then you also have categorical funds, those are things like CTE programs, special ed, lab, Title I, Title I's a federal program, but High and Capable would be another state program. The money that comes new into those programs has to stay in those programs, you can't spend CTE money on basic ed teachers, you can't spend lab money on basic ed teachers. So this again, kind of looked at this increase over a two-year period, and we're talking about, you know, we've talked, we've talked about how it's gonna spike up, and then it comes back down, and I think that, actually, I'll go back one slide if this works. In that, in 19, 20, you can see where we go from 291 to 321 million in 18, 19, and then actually backwards in 19, 20. It's just showing that we are actually going backwards in the second year. Apportionment-wise, state and local, you can see the increase over a three-year period about 3.3%, and then categorical is really the area that we see the largest increase, and that's primarily CTE and lab money that has come into the district. The other thing that we have shared for years with the budget is, or with the board, is how many kids are we budgeting for in various levels, and then CTE, special ed, and ELL. So these are those numbers. What we do is then, every month, we come back to the board and show, this is what, what our accounts are as of September, this is what we are estimating for the year, October, and throughout the year, we do that every month, so that we give as early as possible to the board an idea of, are we on target, or are we off-target, and if we're off-target, we can talk about what needs to occur. The second document then shows the allocation that we have from the state in the various areas, and what, and what we have budgeted for the year, and then, bottom line, what's the total. So we've allocated about $1,241 FTE to the buildings for staffing for the 18, 19 school year, for basic ed, and we budgeted for right around $1,245. Most years, I would say we're within five either way, and I think that's because we do, I think we do a pretty good job of working with the buildings, the buildings do a good job of working with the districts to try to make, because it's, it's extremely important for us to be as accurate as we can, so that there aren't big surprises and fluctuations. So then we get into this four-year budget, which is a new requirement in the 19, 18, 19 budget year. So what we've done is, we've made some assumptions, we have to, we have to project what our enrollment's gonna be for 18, 19 in the next four years, and, and so what we've done is, we've budgeted for, we're projecting approximately a half a percent drop of budgeted, of enrollment from 17, 18 to 21, 22. We have a demographer that we work with that helps us with those estimates, we use our own numbers, we work with his numbers, and come up with. So we're basically looking at a pretty flat enrollment for the district over that timeframe. Revenue growth, I think I shared that it's about 8% for 17, for 18, 19. In this estimate, we're projecting about 3.3% annually over the next four years, in this estimate. And then on the expenditure side of things, we're projecting increases of 3.4%, okay? So what I would say about the, the revenue estimates, those revenue estimates really come from OSPI's estimates of, of a pretty static enrollment, they tell us, and you saw the numbers I've proj, I shared earlier, over a three-year period, they have numbers that we can project out forward from their website. So the numbers are as good as OSPI's formula. And then on the expenditure side, we're budgeting for a 3.4% increase annually. What I would say about the 3.4% increase in expenditures budget, I think that that's aggressive in terms of, do we really believe we can achieve that? And I say that because the last four years, the lowest that we've had in the last four years was about a 3.7% increase, the highest is, I think somewhere around 5.7 or 6% or something like, it's, it's a, it's a bigger number. So I'm just framing this for you, so that you get a sense when you look at the next couple slides, what was used as the basis. So the next slide shows what we're budgeting in this four-year outlook, what do we think the estimated any fund balance would be over this four-year period? And so we're starting at 26.6, we get to the high of 28.8, and we end up going down to 22.6, 22.7 million at the end of that timeframe. I personally believe that the estimates of expenditures are, are aggressive, I, I think it's gonna be, I think if, if past history is the, is the barometer, maybe that's not the right word, but is the predictor of the future, 3.4% is not gonna be easy to achieve. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it would, it would be hard to do that. So what we've done here, so for what the board will actually approve at the budget here, when they adopt the budget at the meeting of the 23rd, they will adopt the budget expenditure level, and they will adopt a four-year outlook as well. They'll also adopt other funds budgets, and we'll get to that really quick also. The next slide, Todd, you, you mentioned that you had asked what would the proposal look like in terms of impacting? So we've gone through, we've had a lot of meetings, the district has cost out what the third year of the contract would cost us, and that's been built into the budget. We also looked at the new salary schedule that EEA proposed, and we have cost estimates for that. The difference between the two is about $15 million when you throw on mandatory benefits, like, you know, unemployment, those kinds of things, and retirement, that you have to pay, it's about an $18 million difference. So what I did was just basically look at the numbers to start with, and if we apply the proposal, what does that do in terms of fund balance as we move forward? The 19, the, the 18, 19 school year, you can see the number's gonna drop fairly significantly, and then by the time you get to 19, 20, it goes below zero. And I'm not saying that that would happen, because I think one of the things that the district has, has done well through the, forever, I'll just say that, is managed the funds, and what, what would be required is, if, if we had a situation like that, we would have to then look at, well, okay, what are we gonna change structurally, so that we can afford to do what we agreed to do? And what I tried to do was outline, what would different options be for the district if we were in that scenario to avoid the red, because the red is a bad color. I don't mean that, I did, no disrespect intended. I did a lot of red shirts, I love red on people, I, on charts, I don't like it. So, we would have in terms of options, if we have options to, we, we try to get more money. So the first thing would be, we would be working with the legislate, legislature, how can we increase the funding to the district? The concern I have with that is, when McLeary was ruled on, I think it was 2012 or something, I've seen somewhere, it was a long time ago. It took the, the state legislature seven years to get to a point where they got out from under the jurisdiction of the Supreme Court, because now, even though I don't think that we would agree that the solution is a solution that really works for districts in Clark County, but that's the solution, it took seven years to get to that point. And in that solution, there are winners and there are losers, right? So, I mean, I'm not saying we're losers, because we're a great district, I absolutely believe that, but in the resolution of McLeary, we were not winners in terms of dollar amounts. So if they come back and they're gonna try to change that in any way, that means that they've gotta impact the winners as well as the losers, or find some way. I'm not saying that they won't do it at some point, I think they will have to do something at some point, but I don't think it's reasonable to think that they would solve Evergreen School District's problem in the short term. I do think that they will have to, because I mean, because the other districts may even say they've got bigger problems than we do. We could eliminate departments, I mean, and all I'm doing is, I'm not saying any of those departments would be eliminated, because none of those things could actually happen, all I'm trying to do is put perspective on how much money it costs to run some of these departments, as it relates to the offset. Now, the offset doesn't, I talked about 18.3 million, so I had to at least lead with business services, if you wiped out everybody in business services, it's about $4 million. That's pain. It, it's insurance, it's a lot, you can't do it, but I'm just giving you the number. IT, some of these things, I think we might be able to, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. IT, and, and not IT certainly, IT, we spent 13.5 million in the district. Curriculum, 6 million, maintenance, the whole department, people, everybody, 5.8 million. Now, there's no way we could close a school, and I'm not saying that, and, and it's on tape, I'm not saying any of this is going to happen, but just to give perspective on what an average-sized elementary school spends in terms of dollars, it's a little over 5 million. What an average middle school spends is around $6.5 million, and what an average-sized high school in our district is about $12.8 million. Just to give perspective, that it would require a lot of different things from a lot of different places. So then we get down to staff, and we talk about if it was all done within one group, what would be required to make that happen? Within the certificated instructional staff, we have approximately 1,800 total, when you look at basic look at basic ed and you look at everything else in the district. 194 gets you to an equivalent number of the 18 million. 194, we couldn't even do that, honestly, because there's language in the contract that protects class sizes. It would require a whole different set of bargaining to make that happen. But that's just informational. If you eliminated administrative staff, you'd leave two in the district. And I'm sure you all have an idea of who the two should be, but I'm not going to get into that right now. Might not be John and I, but two is what would be left. Classified staff, FTE, it's not people, it's FTE. So when you think about a parapro in a building, it's about a .6 FTE. So 296 FTE classified is really probably more like something like 500 people that would be impacted to a certain level. Within that group, you cannot, special ed is a difficult area. You can't, you have to spend at least the same amount the next year as you spent the last year. There's language in the collective bargaining protecting special ed. Title I, LAP, a lot of those programs, you couldn't do anything to that would actually help the situation. So when you think about classified staff, you're really thinking about basic education. And if you talk about 296, and basic education would be your non-ELL, non-special ed, if you have pairs in your building, it's secretaries, it's security people, it's maintenance workers, it's IT workers, it's people in the accounting department, it's people in HR. It's all of those people. You'd have to basically eliminate 80% of the basic ed classified staff in order to get to that number. So it would be a pretty significant structural change, answering the question. I'm really quickly going to just talk about the other funds because I don't think everybody's here really to hear about the transportation vehicle fund. But I'm really quickly going to go through it, and then I'm happy to answer the questions that people have. The first is just give a summary of the capital projects fund. This is where the bond work actually occurs. Another thing we talked about, you're going to see a lot of money spent in these buildings, whether you're being replaced or you're not being replaced, whether it's furniture, whether it's HVAC systems, whether it's carpet, whether it's paint. There's going to be a lot of bond money spent in the buildings in the next five or six years. And I think it's easy to just look at that happening, so why don't we just spend that money on teacher salaries or on classified salaries? The bond money can only go towards those things that the bond approved, so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to raise that issue. We expect to spend, I don't think we'll spend 250 million, but we'll have available to spend 250 million next year. We built a budget around that. The transportation vehicle fund, when we bus kids to school, this fund is just to buy buses. So we're budgeting to buy $3 million worth of buses. I don't think we'll buy that much, but we give ourselves the capacity. Again, when we buy school buses, that's money that can't be used for anything other than buying school buses as well. The ASB, the students control what happens in the ASB fund. This is, the board has to approve the budget ultimately on the 23rd. These are the numbers for the ASB fund. The debt service fund, again, is the fund where we make the payments on the bonds, and what we're budgeting for next year is about 28.5 million in payments in that. I would also say really quickly, within the debt service fund, we've set aside monies to make the, to pay off HILA. We made the decision to build HILA at about 50% of the cost of the building several years ago. We've set aside about half of the money to pay that back over time, and we continue to get great results from that school. I think that might be the last. And that's, that slide right there. Well, you don't see it, but it says end of slide.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Mike. At this point, I would like to open up to the board for any clarifying questions. Do we have any?
I think you have to forgive me, Mike, because I'm still kind of learning all this. You know, I'm only about six months into my board term. So can you explain to me how TRI works? And what part of that is actually, how that fits into contracts and our budget? Because I'm not really sure I understand what the TRI is.
So the state historically has had a statewide salary schedule, and they pass money down to local districts for the statewide salary schedule. The legislature also, at some point in the past, I don't know when, they provided for the opportunity to bargain locally for additional pay for time, T, responsibility, R, or incentives, I. So that's your TRI, time, responsibility, and incentive. So in our, over time, what our district has between time and responsibility has bargained a number that is for the next school year, 29.75. So the state passes on the salaries to the district, and then what this local taxpayer has done in our district is enhance that state salary between the four days' work and the responsibility to do a number of things in the contract, an additional almost 30%. So TRI is local money to provide market wage rate wages to employees, and that is a key part of the McCleary solution in that the legislature determined that there's nothing more basic in basic ed than compensation. And so it's the state's responsibility to pay for, for teacher salaries. And that's why they're increasing the allocation and lowering the local. They still, TRI is still bargainable, but I think over the next several years, we'll get a better sense of what you truly can bargain that's legal for TRI. We're still so early in this transition into a new, that a lot of it hasn't been clarified yet, but that's what TRI is.
Any other questions from the board?
Mike, I want to thank you, Mike, for such a, you told us both together, and for me and you have this initiative, you do every year. It's really nice to have that final, you know, that's like the budget, you know, what's going on. But I do want to ask about reserve policy. I know the schoolwork on 5% fund balance policy. And I want you to kind of explain the purpose of them and then tell us about what other districts do and what happened to them in the recession.
Yeah, I mean, I think the schoolwork has a reserve policy of 5%. And then there are certain reserves that are dictated to by the accounting, manually the accounting people in Olympia. Example of that would be if you have generated more revenue in the food service program than you extended in the food service program, that's got to be set aside as a specific reserve. The importance of the reserve, really, there's, one of the main reasons is when we sell bonds, we get a rate, a bond rating. And the higher your bond rating, the better your bond rating, the better the interest rates are that you get when you sell your bond. So our district doesn't have the highest bond rating, and that's primarily because we don't have the property value in Clark County that they do in King County. So if you're Evergreen School District, then if we were in King County, we would be a top-rated district. So what it partly does is translate into better tax rates for the community. If, there is a district in King County that has actually gone negative, that when you look at their chart, it's actually red, and they, their bond rating is like, it's about, it's the lowest bond rating you can get in the state. So their taxpayers are having to pay more money. That's one. Two is, really, we talked about this increase earlier than we expected in 18, 19, and then it goes back down again. And we've had questions about, well, if the legislature hadn't changed their plan, what were you planning on doing? And what would have happened if the legislature hadn't changed their plan was, we would have seen, we didn't have enough money in 18, 19 to break even, to have revenues higher than expenditures. In 19, 20, we didn't project to have enough revenue to over expenditures either. But what we were planning on doing was using our reserve to mitigate the cuts. So if in 18, 19, we were short, let's say, 5 million, but in 19, 20, we were only going to be short 3 million, we would have mitigated the cuts the first year and then only cut to the level of the 3 million rather than the 5 million. So it gives flexibility. It's just like having a savings account. When you have a situation that occurs, you've got a problem, it's something that can help bail you out and buy you time to make whatever the proper responses are to deal with the situation.
I think the other thing you want to consider is two years ago, when the legislature didn't pass a budget until the last minute, had we actually had a government shutdown, that fund balance would be what we would make payroll with, and we have enough cash reserves to make about five weeks' worth of payroll. So we would be able to pay for a month during a government shutdown.
Any other questions from the board?
I've got one point. I'm going to jump in, since it kind of tails on Julie. You know, we looked at the fund balance in the chart you had, you know, you can go back to it, but based on the current contract, we're looking at dropping down to about 22 million, which would say that we're not within that 5% board policy level.
Yeah.
One of the things that we were able to do over the last several years that we were very proud of, and we've told the community over and over again, is we did this whole one-to-one initiative without going out for a tech levy. But that was pre-McLeary fix. Looking at the current McCLeary fix situation and the revenue and expenditures, and on the basic assumption that we're not going to be, we don't want to reduce people or salaries, one of the things I'm going to ask the board to consider over the next few months, because we are limited to that $1.50, which is really going to tamper our levy, I don't believe we can continue to fund our technology at the level that we have with a one-to-one levy initiative unless we consider a tech levy this next spring. And that is just, it's going to, basically, it's going to come down to, we do a tech levy, we eliminate technology or reduce people. And I don't want to reduce people. I think the technology is how we're actually getting the curriculum into kids' hands. And so I think we need to seriously consider.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to be really clear, because there's a lot of information that's been swirling around in numerous places. So I just want to be clear on where we stand with the current contract. What's the average teacher salary in our district? How much will beginning teachers make? Because that's critical. Where do we, where do we stand in, how does that compare to other districts? I guess, we see these numbers that are these huge percentages, but what does that really mean as it pertains to actual salaries? Is there more information that you can give us on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we've produced a number of documents of what the current contract looked like. Off the top of my head, don't hold me to the numbers, but I think that the beginning salary in the current contract's a little over 50,000. Is that right? I think it's just a little over 50,000, the average salary.
The hard part is comparing apples to apples in this situation, because if you go to the WA website, they include all supplemental contracts in the numbers that they're putting on there on the recent ratified agreements. So you would include additional days, you would include like our professional fund, those are included on the numbers that you're seeing on the WA website. So if you took our contract and you include the TRI pay, you include the professional fund, then you get to that 50,000, a little over 50,000 for our beginning teacher. The top-end teachers are 93 and change, and the average across the district is about 77,700.
It's on, I mean, I don't have it here. It's on the website. What we did was we took the 17, 18 salary schedule, we added the 1.9 for 18, 19, we added the 5% for TRI. So it shows what the state's salary schedule plus the 29, you know, 27.55 plus the four days, plus the 1,500 in professional fund. So if you're talking about all the, all the compensation, I, you know, off the top, off the top of my head, I'm not going to, but I know it's, we've got it several places on the website. Hey, Mike? Well, this is coming from our website. John's talking about the comparison of how WA's putting up, the chart that he used was taking all the compensation from the different agreements and plugging it up on the, in on that chart.
Hey, Mike, I have a question. You were talking about enrollment, and you're actually projecting a slight decline going forward for enrollment, which is like a different scenario, I think, for us. Can you give us a little more detail on that impact?
Well, what we, on the impact or on why?
Well, not the why. I guess I'm looking, oh, I guess.
So the, we work with a demographer that gives us, the demographer looks at birth rates, they look at the number of permitted developments that are in the pipeline in the future. So they still expect the district to grow, but we're four, five, six years out, we should be back up around 27, 28,000 potentially. So from the 25,000 figure, it's just the last several years, the kindergarten classes that have come in have been a lot less than what we have seen in the past. And so some of that's got to start turning around with larger kindergarten classes. Not only though did we see smaller kindergarten classes last year, but we saw where normally you always have more than, you know, if you've got 1,800 kindergartners, you've got 1,825 first graders, if you have 1,825 first graders, 850. You grow usually a little bit year to year. We didn't see that this past year, and the area that we had been growing pretty significantly in was it within the ELL population that actually flattened and decreased this past year. So we're not sure whether or not the, some of the rhetoric that was out there that impacted kids coming or not. But I think we're just trying to be more conservative with the estimate, knowing how important it is for us to, it's hard to staff for kids and then they don't show up because we're going to spend the money on the staff regardless. We need to try to be as accurate as we possibly can. And the impact is, you know, every year, we look at the number of kids we have, and we generate the number of staff, and we work through that with the buildings. There's enough fluctuation of staff. I mean, we end up bringing in probably 100 to 150 new teachers almost every year. So there's always just a little bit of fluctuation. The enrollment impact probably, I mean, you feel it more in the building. It's not, it's not a huge financial thing. It's more of a just, how does it affect the buildings? But I, I do think we'll continue to grow, but I just think we're still three, four, five years out. But we've got to see some kindergarten classes come in closer to what they're projecting than what we saw the last couple of years.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to invite, if anyone in the audience has any clarifying questions on this presentation, if you do, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. So is there anyone out there that has a clarifying question about this presentation? Okay, okay, thank you, Mike. So that's our first reading of this budget. And as we mentioned, we'll be bringing it forward for a second reading at a special board meeting on August 23rd. Next, we have policy 1,900. And for this, I want to throw it over to you, Superintendent Seach, to describe this policy. It's also a first reading.
Right, we talked about this in workshop last meeting. We're proposing a new policy for the district, which is the sale of real property that outlines the process that we would follow, pretty much follow statutes. But one of the things, when we set up the new governance model and you establish the operations expectation policies under facilities, you retain the authority over the purchase and sale of all property. So while WADA typically recommends that this would be in the 6,000 series, what we've tried to do is move all of the board policies into the 1,000s so that those are all the ones that you still are responsible for, and the rest of the policy handles what you were handed. So we're recommending that the board pass this policy, which provides direction to us from the board in alignment with state law on how we, what process we use when selling property.
Okay, any clarifying questions from the board about this policy? Any clarifying questions from the audience about this policy? Okay, so we'll bring this forward for a second reading at our next board meeting. Okay, thanks, John. Next on our agenda, we have board comments. Do we have any board comments?
Well, several of us over the last couple of days have been at the, we were there today at the, for the one-by-one kickoff, which was awesome. And I'm really proud of our district that we do provide good professional development for our staff. It's really important to us and has been for a long time. And to see how that program has grown, the one-by-one, to have so many people in other districts coming to take advantage of that kind of training is, is pretty exciting. And I really enjoyed the speakers. And so, and then yesterday, or, yeah, I'm going to get, sorry. And so, and then yesterday, or, yeah, I'm gonna get, sorry, Thursday already, with the administrative meetings. So I just like to see, I like what I'm seeing with what's happening with that, and that it keeps continuing to grow every year. After that, I met up with John over at Hila to meet with the executive director from the WASDA, a school board member administrator.
What's your state school director?
No, it's a town pastor, thank you, Todd. And he was really interested in, in seeing what special schools that we have around the state, and so he had heard about Hila and wanted to get a look at that. And he was, they were very impressed. And so they're gonna feature the school in their next publication, and I think, John, you're gonna be doing the workshop or something at Congress.
Yeah, the graduation requirement change bill, I'm gonna be presenting that at WASDA as one of Tim's select presentations, and then he's gonna basically mention that in the article on Hila, trying to get more interest, so I can get wider audience on that.
But it was, you know, I'm proud in all of our schools, but it was, it was fun to show him something a little different that he hadn't seen before, so that was, that was exciting. And I also wanted to bring up, we lost an amazing citizen last week, Scott Driscoll, who I know some of you know. The defibrillators that we have in our schools in the district are because of Scott and his wife Kelly. After losing their son at the age of 13 over at White East, running, his heart stopped, and they lost him. They have made a real impact in our community with the A and D's. And Scott lost his battle with cancer, and I was at the service on Saturday. And just, there were a number of our students there that were either impacted by him because he helped with the coaching of his daughter's softball team, and the son's baseball team, and then students that were saved by the defibrillators, several of them coming from Evergreen High School, but we've, I mean, these have made a difference and have saved lives. They do the heart screening every year, they're in charge of that at Peace Health. I just, I was just heartbreaking to see us lose somebody who's given so much to this community. So I wanted to make sure we remember him today.
Thanks, Becky. Any other comments?
I just wanted to bring up that next month, I will be attending the WASDA legislative conference. I felt, there was a webinar last week for it, about the process. There's a webinar coming up in a couple of weeks with all of the proposals. One of them is on the stop procedures proposal for regulation requirements. So I would like to, we're gonna kind of organize our thoughts on some of the proposals, so I can testify at the conference on behalf of the board at our upcoming September meeting, and I'll bring that up in the future agenda items. I'd like to kind of organize those, if you have any other thoughts on what we want to give our priority.
Thanks.
Perk is awesome, and he represents WASDA for the entire region, for the 36th, as well as WASDA legislative.
Thanks, Julie. Any other board comments?
I forgot something, Julie reminded me, we should talk about legislative. I feel like tonight's, the night to just get information out and clear up some things, and it's important. One of them, there's a wild rumor out there that our board, our former superintendent did not participate in the McClary lawsuit, and weren't a party to it, that we did not lobby our legislators, and that is just an out now. I'm just gonna call it what it is. We did participate in that McClary lawsuit, we helped finance that lawsuit. Our superintendents, board members were up at the legislature lobbying for a fix that would have been a good fix for us, expressed our concerns over some of the swap situation. I'm trying to think of something else, but we were ver, and we were very supportive to our local legislators in giving them the information they needed to make sound decisions. I guess we didn't give them enough information, because this decision has not been a good one. But I feel really strongly that everyone in this room know that we work very hard in making sure the legislature has the facts about what's going on in our district, and that we lobby for our staff. Our district was kind of the lead on the issue with substitutes, where before, if you were a retired employee, you could not come back and be a substitute. Well, the work from John and, and John, the other John, they were, really worked hard to get that legislation pushed through that allows us to have some of our wonderful retired teachers come back and help as substitutes. So I just want that to be really clear, that that action is going on and always has been going on. And so I just, I'm clear about that.
Thanks.
It really bothered me, I didn't want anyone to think that we weren't doing that, because we really do.
Thanks, Becky. Any other board comments? Oh, go ahead, Jeanne.
Saturday, August 18th, is the annual stuff the bus for the Evergreen School District Foundation out at Fisher's Basin Park. It'll be part of the Fun Fest. This'll be the second year that they've been part of the Fun Fest, as well as they are just wrapping up their citywide school supply drive, in which they partner with In Hoover Public Schools, and they do a large citywide school supply drive. Yes, we're aware that we actually provide elementary school supplies. The foundation does still collect them and hold them in a storage unit on the property for any future or any needs over the school year, but we also do concentrate on middle school and high school. So the stuff the bus event is a huge event that's been going on for many years, and we're just excited that it just keeps getting more and more momentum. They've actually done, I believe, three TV and radio spots so far, they have two more before the end of the week before the stuff the bus. So I just wanted to kind of give the foundation a shout out and congratulate them on the great work they're doing.
Is this something to be with backpacks?
It is actually backpacks, but it is, what they get a lot of is the elementary school backpacks, which as we know are not secure or good enough for middle and high school. So that is one of the biggest needs, maybe, is middle and high school backpacks as well as compless. I always end up buying Walmart out of all their compless areas.
Thanks, Jeanne. Any other board comments? Oh, yeah, that's right, we had a really good meeting, was it just yesterday? Yeah, we have, we tried to meet jointly with board trustees with Clark College on a nanny basis. I thought we had a really good discussion, because we have a really good partnership with Clark College, not only because we have a number of students that attend Running Start. I think it's over 600 of our students attend Clark College to Running Start. And it was very exciting for us to be able to talk to them about our directions in terms of career pathways, and to hear about Clark College's long-term plans for their guided pathways. And it seemed like there's, you know, a lot of continued opportunities to work together. So, yeah, thanks. Any other board comments? Okay, and then next is future agenda items, I guess Julie, you were talking about.
Yeah, I would like to, we have the agenda for the workshop, for review, lots of other parties, those meetings, I think.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any other future agenda items? And then, okay, next is citizens' comments, and this is a portion of the meeting where citizens can address the board for three minutes on any items not related to personnel, not related to anything legal. I request that if you are wanting to address the board, that you sign up on the list. Here's the first list, but is there another list to be able to continue to sign up? Okay, right there. And I guess we'll just go down the list, and as we call your names, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm, I'm third or fourth on the list, but I'm one, I'm a mother of these young children that, what's your name? Casey A. Brown. And I, what else did I, have I?
Yes, please come forward, and we do have the three-minute timer here. Yeah, if you could be addressing the board for your comments?
Did you want my address too?
Uh, yes, name and address.
My name is Casey A. Simmons Brown, and 2013 Southeast 130th Avenue, Y. Brown. I've been a teacher on the Evergreen School District for 11 years. I knew I wanted to teach in the Evergreen District, and I was still finishing my bachelor's degree at PSU. I've always hated my sister's classroom, Carney Elementary, and later chose to do my curriculum teaching there. And it was this experience, along with student teaching in a district in Oregon, that solidified my feelings that the Evergreen School District was more in line with my vision of teaching and learning. Teachers were given respect and freedom to teach to their individual learners. Professional development was focused on the workshop method and other best practices. Many times over the years, it has been much more work than was required of other teachers in districts that had canned curriculum. I knew then, though, as I know now, that it was worth it to reach each of my students and give them their best opportunity of success. Despite being a lifelong Oregonian, I have always taught in Evergreen. It was not until two years ago, when my older daughter was approaching school age, that I realized we had to move. It was a hard decision, with much discussion and compromise, considering my husband did not want to move to Dan Hoover. However, we both agreed that we wanted our daughters to have the best educational opportunities possible. And I insisted that that, that Evergreen School District was where that was possible. My daughter has just finished her kindergarten year, and she loved it. I knew that she would, so I brought her to school with me, where we have the most amazing kindergarten teams in the world. I'm planning on bringing my younger daughter with me next year. I don't think I am unique in my respect or loyalty to this district. I have stayed here despite six years without the cost of living in the desert. Despite healthcare costs rising 17% in one year. Despite receiving only a $7.06 raise over a three-year period. I have stayed here because I felt respected for my skills as a professional. I came to this profession having a bachelor's science degree, magna cum laude, and a master's education. This will be my 12th year in this district, and I still make less than the average person in this country with a master's degree. I was shocked two years ago, that when the economy was finally doing better, that we had to fight for a pay increase. Now, I am disgusted. I am hurt, I am frustrated. I moved my family to this district.
Sorry, did you bring up any other comments?
I moved my family to this district so that my daughters could receive the best educational opportunity possible, and now I feel that is in jeopardy. The priorities of this district are becoming more and more removed from the priorities that brought me here. And I'm afraid that if this district's philosophy of disrespect towards its most vital resource continues, that the wonderful, caring, and intelligent teachers here will leave. I wrote this last week, and I didn't think I could feel more disrespected. But yesterday, I went to usher in the bargaining team, and when I saw that the school board had sent two members, it broke my heart again. And still tonight, I thought I couldn't feel more disrespected. And then, let's put us at the end. I was at the campus school board meeting supporting my sister yesterday, and they had the middle comments first. We've heard my children melt down, don't be steed, but my heart is broken.
If you have to clarify the agenda, the board will not be allowed to respond, but thank you for the comments. Who's next on the list?
Jim Martin.
Jim Martin, 14202 Northeast 30th Street, corner mile from here. I've lived here 32 years, and I recognize the country is divided, but I never thought Evergreen School District would be divided, not like it is now. I was on the school board. I know the challenges the school board members make. I don't know you, sir, but I'm really disappointed in your leadership. I know you're not supposed to have personalities, but where's the communication? These people, they've been looking forward to summer, not spending summer in an eighty-degree weather continuous. Where are you? You've let us down. I'm a taxpayer, I've always voted for every levy, so I'm a supporter. It takes three votes to remove a superintendent. If I had cause, I would be moving for that.
You said that you were concerned about the communication, and where's the communication? Have you been to the website? Have you been receiving the superintendent's? Yeah, just, I just wanna make sure we understand what it is that you didn't get, that you wanted to, the information that you wanted to see.
I think it's up to the district to react. I shouldn't have run the district, I should know what's going on.
No, we said we can't comment on it, we can ask clarifying questions. And so I wanna hear what he has to say.
The other thing, I don't know if you can see this, probably not, this is the logo of Evergreen School District. When I was on the board, we had shirts that had our names on it. We were that proud of it. Now, that was many years ago. Can this board say they're proud of the board? This used to be the gem of Southwest Washington. I don't hear that now, and I'm here in the community. I jolly well don't hear it here.
Thank you.
Bill Bravo, 1004 Northwest 43rd Street. I come to you tonight to appeal. I know at the very beginning of this process, when I talked to Mike and Janine, I let them know, this is, this is a personal issue. Mike did a really good job of doing a real clinical job of breaking down the budget, showing us that despite having lots and lots more money, that somehow we can't afford our teachers. He did a really good job of it. But I want you to understand, this is personal for us. We have been involved in the McClary decision from the very beginning. I personally been up to lobby, I've personally been up to talk to the legislature. And for the past decade, my members have known about the McClary decision, and that it was supposed to provide relief, that eventually, at the end of this process, that it would be most important in the state of Washington that we fund our schools and fund education. And I'm unfortunate that maybe we didn't get exactly this solution that we wanted, but we did get a lot more money. And the idea that you cannot run a school district on significantly huge amounts of money compared to where we were even last year, is just absurd to me, that you have enough money to pay your teachers. Now, I also wanted you to think about this. I look at this as beyond just a funding issue, this is a human rights issue. You may think that that's a little bit of hyperbole, but I'm gonna tell you that it's not. This is an equal pay issue. When you hear the statistic about 83 cents on a dollar being paid to one, and you have to wonder where does that come from? Because you know you can't hire two people, one a man and one a woman, and pay the woman less. That 83 cents comes from our institutions, that are primarily women, where we have made it okay to pay women less. Educators up against any professionals in the private sector. And I realize that we go private versus public sector. And I realize that we go private versus public sector all the time, but it is time. It is time for this to happen. And then the last thing I just wanted to say, I want to respect the time and I've only got a minute left, but I just want to say, I want to talk to you about what you can afford. You said you cannot afford this schedule that we put on the table. Well, first off, you can't afford to bargain, I guess, because you've never sent anybody to our table with the authority to make a decision. Over and over and over again and day in and day out, and we sat there and we came ready to bargain every time and you sent nobody there that had the authority to bargain. Now, I also want you to think about what you can afford. I know what you can't afford. You can't afford a caring teacher thinking about each one of their students. You cannot afford for a teacher to place their body between a person that is disturbed and to protect the children in their classroom, to put their body between somebody coming in, a gunman, or whatever else into the room. And our teachers will put their bodies between themselves in the danger because they know that's the deal. And it doesn't matter if they have kids at home. They're still going to be there and they're going to get in front of their students and protect them with their own lives if they have to. You can't afford that. I know you can't. There's no money that you could pay for that. You can afford this.
Good evening. My name is Adam Aguilera and I'm an English teacher of 10 years in the Evergreen School District. I chose to teach here because Evergreen Public Schools has always been known to have outstanding teachers and educators who are pillars in this community. We have raised generations in Clark County and we are known for our commitment to public service, whether it is coaching the local sports team or serving in the legislature. We have been there for our community to pass levies and bonds and in return, our community has always responded when we have called for help. And in the midst of this historic bargain, they have heated the call again. Outside this room in 90-degree weather stands hundreds of educators, parents, students, community leaders, senior citizens, labor unions, and stakeholders. They and the people in this room have made it clear. Settle now the Evergreen proposal to meet the McLeary promise of fair wages to the 1,800 educators of this community. Tonight, this board will make a decision whether they want to be on the right side of history. Across the state, dozens of local school districts have already settled the constitutionally mandated wages being sent down from the state. The community knows the money is here and that it belongs to our teachers and educators. If the Evergreen School Board chooses not to direct a superintendent to bargain in good faith, then here is a statement from the support bargaining team of the Evergreen Education Association. As the support bargaining leader with my respected colleague from Union High School, Marge Hogan, we represent 16 zone leaders and dozens of picket captains in every corner of our school district. If the school board forces its employees to strike, then these are the consequences to expect. We will hold every member of the school board publicly accountable. Every organization, small business, place of worship, governing body, and community group will know your names. Every community partner, sponsor, and business that affiliates with this school district will be made aware of how its employees in this district are being mistreated. We will picket at every campus, on every street corner, to have our voices heard. You will see us on your Facebook, in front of every camera, and on the radio to share our stories of how our members are struggling to stay in the middle class in the midst of an affordable housing crisis, student loans, and soaring costs of healthcare. Everywhere you go, you will see and hear us until you either vote to approve a settlement or resign in disgrace. However, after a decade of teaching, I have learned from my students never to give up on anyone. And I believe and I am hopeful that this board and this superintendent will make the right decision. Look at these people. And I would invite you after this board meeting to go outside and just talk to people. They'll be respectful. They just want to tell you their stories and why this funding matters to them. But please connect with our community and know that we are serious about this and understand the possibility that you could set a model in the state. Imagine this school board and this superintendent saying that we are going to meet McLeary promise for our educators. You would create a ripple effect all across Washington State in a positive way where this community would love you. I mean, wouldn't you give them positive support if they came from here? You'd inspire them and hope that there is a better day tomorrow for all of our educators in this community because we're struggling and we need help and you are our elected representatives to help us.
Hey, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Everyday teachers in this district teach the skills of syllabus course, collaboration, and critical thinking. And these are not just ideas we keep in classrooms. These are mindsets that we value in real life. So I thought I would bring that into the conversation this evening. One component of syllabus course and collaboration is recognizing common ground. I interact regularly with people on both sides of the bargaining table, so I just wanted to remind all of us that everyone on both sides respects and appreciates teachers and understands that we need to pay teachers well in order to attract them to this district and keep them here. So to me, the question is, how do we do that? Now comes the critical thinking part. I needed relevant data to analyze and I tried to use the percentages that have been shared with us. For example, our district is offering an increase of 1.9% and Othello District has increased their compensation by about 17%. I realized that these comparisons may not actually work. I don't know how much compensation Othello provided in the first place as compared to our school district. So I don't know if 17% brought them even with us, past us, et cetera. And I also don't know what trade-offs Othello accepted in order to increase compensation by 17%. It's possible that to increase teacher salaries by that amount, they decided to decrease something else in their budget that we would not agree with. So I started thinking about the fact that when my husband and I set the budget for our household, we don't compare our budget to our neighbors. Our decisions are simply based on how much money we have this year compared to last year. Where can we spend more? Are there areas where we need to spend less? So here's what I see when I apply that lens to the budget numbers and projections in the context of this bargain. Last year, if you subtract out the amount the district paid for certificated salaries, the district had about $175 million for everything else. Classified salaries, bus maintenance, electricity bills, high technical program, et cetera, et cetera. So next year, there will be a budget. The things that last year's $175 million was spent on will still be there using up that money. In addition, the district will pay some amount of money to certificated staff. So after that, there will be some extra amount left over. And there will be parts of the budget wanting an increase just like we do. So I wondered how will our increased compensation affect the potential for other parts of the budget to also get increased funding? The district's 1.9% proposal results in an extra $20 million to increase other parts of the budget next year. The union's proposal results in about $5.5 million extra for other parts of the budget. The year after that, assuming the same teacher compensation amounts, with the district's proposal, there will be about $14.5 million extra for all the other needs in the budget. With the union's proposal, there will be about $200,000 extra for all the other needs in the budget. I'm not trying to argue for or against one side or the other. I would however like each side to confirm my numbers or correct them. I think this is important information that each person should consider as they decide for themselves what proposals are hopefully compromises to support. Thank you all for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Jody Crisina, 304 Southeast 101st Ave., 98664. I am the voice chair of the Clark County Democrats, but I am here tonight as a concerned parent in the community. I watched this year as the legislature kicked the can of McLeary down the road, pushing through multiple special sessions before a bill was written in the 11th hour and likely too hastily passed. They didn't get it all right. But what our legislators did get right is that our educators are the most important keys of our public school system and need to be compensated fairly. The state and district provide a framework for education, but educators fill in the gaps. Not just filling supplies, but the gaps in our society. Our kids are underhomed, underfed, and it's our teachers that create a safe space for our students, even as they tackle these same crises in their own lives. Ears are worn to come to the bargaining table in good faith, to look to the settlements their neighbor districts across the state are coming to, and to give our teachers the money that was designated to them by our legislature. For all of us, I hope that school will start on the 28th, but my family is prepared to stand with our teachers if not. Up yet.
I live at 2520 Northeast 41st Street, 98682. I am a community member and volunteer in the schools where I've been a volunteer for 20 years. My daughter is a teacher. She's been a teacher for 20 years. She has her national certification for masters for reading endorsement. My granddaughter is also a teacher. She's 27, has her masters and her DSL and reading endorsements. My daughter-in-law is a teacher in Vancouver, Missouri. I love to be in the classroom and watch the teachers. They are so dedicated. They love their students so much. My daughter has just written a letter that she's put out about how much she loves her students and how much teaching, how important it is in her life. But she is really sad right now. We were so hopeful when Dr. Stich became superintendent. She loves that he comes in her room and sits down on the floor with the children and talks to them, unlike the last superintendent. So we were hopeful that the children would be cherished and the teachers would be cherished. But I am just horrified and I am so ashamed of the way the teachers are being, just put aside how they come last. I know there's money that's been remarked for teacher salaries that they're not getting. And I can't understand how that can be the case. Teachers do put their lives on the line. There is no profession that where professionals are willing to do what teachers do for their children. And if it weren't for the teachers, I don't care if you're a doctor or a lawyer or who you are, you wouldn't be where you are if you didn't have that teacher in your life. So they should come first and when teachers come first, then the children also come first.
I feel like a lot of what I have to say is redone, so I'm, I'm kind of peoplefully redone it. I'm a teacher at Carney. I've had Dr. Stich come into my room and I'm also a parent. I've been here for many years just in the district and have the same affinity that a lot of people express. And I have to say the impression I had up to this point, Dr. Stich, was such goodwill. And even this morning at the keynote speech, you appreciated everything you had to say about vulnerability, about being aware of biases, and knowing that perspective taking is a really important component of anything that we do, especially in the teaching field, obviously. And, and questions, but I guess my main question is to think about how are you going to make yourself vulnerable in this situation and come to the table to have a conversation that addresses some of the things Margaret's talking about? Because I'd like to look at site and there are some things in there that don't answer some of the things as plain, in a plain speaking way and the manner that, I hope I'm saying your name right, Margaret, in the way that she talked about it. Because union can say one thing, district can say one thing. I comprehend it, but there's a tasm and I'm trying to intellectually understand it. I have a huge emotional investment, just like everybody. And teaching is not like any other profession, as you know. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of passion in this. But that aside, my intellect says, and this is what I'm looking for on the website, but I honestly have not seen. What was the plan to fund the district in the absence of the passage of the McLeary, the timing of the passage? That I have not seen on the district website. The second thing is, I guess ultimately, what is the justification on the website for 22 million that's been earmarked for us? And I'm not saying that therefore all 22 million needs to come to us because I don't think anybody wants that. But I think that's part of the good faith process of putting yourself in a vulnerable position and thinking about what are the priorities? If you're investing in people and education is ultimately about people, what are you going to do to give a message to the people who are on the ground every day? And that's perspective taking. That's taking the bias out of this and getting right in there with what's going to happen to make the greatest difference for the students? Because that's all the, ultimately, that's all we should all care about.
Anyone else set up on the citizens' comments list in the back? Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments. We very much appreciate it. Next, the board will be going into recess to sign papers. After recess, we'll be having a board workshop to cover, let's see, monetary reports on a couple of our policies, operational expectation five, which is financial planning, OB two, which is emergency superintendent succession. We'll be having board meeting debrief. We'll be having legislative update as well as the superintendent update. Again, thank you very much for attending and we are now in recess.